Camera to the Zoom PC.
All right, good evening. It's Tuesday, September 30th, Board of Alderman meeting. We are going to start with our discussion session and I believe Gary Carter from our staff is gonna lead a discussion on the Taste of St. Louis.
Good evening, Gary Carter, Director of Economic Development. You have before you a summary that David laid out earlier tonight for you about the Taste of Clayton. So we are here tonight because when we initially entered into this agreement, it was a one-year contract that could be extended, not more than two additional terms up to five years each based on mutual agreement with both parties. And we just wanted to provide you with a recap from this year's event so you could have that as you evaluate whether you would like to proceed with future events or not. We'll start with operational concerns. The required permit and information required of those permits was not timely. Now, from doing other special events and working with other vendors, there is always a first-year learning process and I would attribute some percentage of the difficulties we had this year with that. But I do think that the event producer does have some responsibility in that also. So I think it was a learning experience on both our parts, but certainly their part could have been a little bit more efficient than we did experience. We did have ever-evolving footprint. If you remember when we initially spoke about that, it was a much larger footprint. I think due to some internal issues, both with sponsorships and potential vendors for the event, we did wind up shrinking that footprint, but it was, I don't know, Matt, probably within two weeks before the event that we, or closer to a week before the actual event that it was actually finalized. So that was a challenge and something to address in the future if we do proceed with future events. We did have some complications with communications with staff on the permitting side, on the footprint side, on the operational from traffic control and right-of-way permits, but also communication within the Communication Department. We didn't receive good information to help promote the event either, so that's something that will need to be addressed if we move forward to. Trash was collected in the areas, but unfortunately, the vendor that the event producer used did not get everything cleared out Sunday night. In fact, he himself had to come Monday and clear the remaining trash piles out. They were done, I think, by noon on Monday, but the expectation was the streets were to be completely cleared by Monday morning. And then the same issue with the traffic control, they used third-party traffic control and a lot of the equipment used for that was pushed to the sidewalk or against buildings and wasn't picked up until midday Monday. So that's another issue we would have to address. So basically, the overarching statement from that is there were some learning opportunities in there, but there was also something, if we do move forward, that we would probably want to address more structurally in the revised contract in order to ensure a little bit better performance in those areas. We did receive his feedback. I won't necessarily read it word-for-word to you, but he thought the event was relatively decent, given the heat, which was the major challenge of the weekend. And we'll come to that in a few minutes again when we talk about fire and police response. The online reviews were positive. He would like to address moving the date to May or June to avoid the summertime heat and any running too close to art fair. So that's something to discuss. He also would like to consider being open for lunch on Friday. He felt that opening so late Friday was not a benefit to him. He did acknowledge that the event was not profitable this year. And one of the lacking components of the event was the entertainment component. It just simply wasn't enough. It was on a small stage, kind of separated from the main area, so that's something he would also like to address. He did think that the traffic control went well. He himself was not exceptionally happy with the trash vendor. And on the, I don't know if it's on your backside or your second page, but we kind of go into the public safety issues. There was the typical lost keys. As you can imagine, there was some heat-related responses. And I think there's three, two or three instances of quote-unquote fights, but really turned out to be verbal disagreements between some people. Officers were involved, but there was, I don't think, anything that actually come of the two. So probably nothing out of the normal, given 100-plus heat index. And there were no calls Sunday. We did have limited feedback from Clayton businesses. There was a restaurant outside of the footprint that said that his business was hurt. Their business was hurt all three days because of the event. And we did have one retailer, non-restaurant, within the footprint that was very pleased with the event increased their sales there. So the point of this being, this is kind of something for you to contemplate so we can decide whether we would like to move forward. And if we do want to move forward, you know, I think David and I would both suggest that we address reopening the contract to address some of these issues that we did experience this year so we could have a little bit cleaner version. Happy to answer any questions.
We can just start, Susan, if you want, if you have any questions or comments.
Yeah, I'm kind of curious what your take and our Clayton staff's take was on the success of the event.
I don't think it was successful. I unfortunately wasn't able to attend personally, but from discussion with the staff that was here and the event producer, you know, he lost money. I think he was fairly upfront about that or didn't, or just barely broke even. I don't know what the difference is, but you know, I think a lot of it, like even the events we do ourselves. If you went to Jazz Fest over the weekend, wildly successful. Anything in 70-degree temperature usually is. That's why California has a lock on outdoor events. Not so much Arizona. But so I think the weather played a huge part of the poor attendance. It was just clearly too hot to be eating fried food on a city street. So you know, if you move into June and you have 75-degree temperature and you're not butting up against a huge event in St. Charles like it was this year also, then you might stand a better chance.
Do you know if historically he's been profitable with this or?
Well, so he's only had it a limited number of years. And this has kind of bounced around from different locations. It was in the city, it was in Chesterfield, and it was back at Ballpark Village. You know, from working for events for a long time now, most are not as profitable as you would think. You know, I think you can see that from our own art fair. The mayor sits on that board also, and it's very, very much sponsor-dependent. And I think that was where this event came up short this year, in which necessitated some of the pullback.
Yeah, we went and it was the heat. You're right, in that heat, you're not hungry. So, all right, thank you.
I just want to clarify a couple things. On the feedback about entertainment needed to hold attendees at the event, my expectation is that that's the producer's responsibility to secure entertainment.
That's correct.
And so, but it sounds like they're just acknowledging that that was a weakness.
They are acknowledging their own weakness, yes.
Yeah. And one thing I was curious about, so they secured the vendors for trash collection and traffic control? And do we have any kind of like preferred vendors? Are they vendors that have worked in the city of Clayton before? Like what's?
Well, Matt is here. We don't necessarily have, we have the same trash vendor that they used is the same trash vendor that we use. And unfortunately, I mean, as far as cleanup goes, I think they did use, did they? Yeah, so and that's the cleanup crew. I mean, the containers are not an issue. It's the crew going around. And from my own experience, that is something that needs to be actively managed from our own personal experience. And I think if you do actively manage it, you get a better response. So that may be, have been a learning opportunity for Chuck also, is the active management. And I think him having to pick it up Monday morning himself, he's probably learned that lesson the hard way.
Okay. Or even it would be something where we would specify that they need to be aware that they, we expect them to do actively.
Yeah, and that's, I made the statement earlier. David and I both believe if this body decides to give another chance, you know, we would like to crack open that agreement one more time to put in things that we've learned from this year.
Yeah. Most of the incidents appear to be heat-related, which is not at all surprising, given, I mean, I didn't come because it was, I mean, I didn't like leave my house, right, like that weekend. So what can you say, if anything, about that? Like, I would assume that we have some incidents at the art fair or at the Jazz Fest or at anything else, whether it's
Yeah, I'm not aware of
lost keys or, I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, there's always lost keys, lost phones. One year during the Jazz Fest, we had a lady drop her phone in the restroom. So I mean, there's always something that happens like that. There's always. I think he handed her the glove.
He did, really?
There's always heat incidents at art fair in past years when it is hot, you know, some years. I mean, this event, had it been 70 degrees, would have been a different event, I think. And this past art fair would be a different art fair had it been 95-plus.
Yeah.
Too, so you know, anything outside is weather-dependent. And I think I try to make a point of that when we do our event presentation in the spring is that, you know, recognize that any amount of money that you authorize for this is gone the moment you do because unless we pull the event before we spend the money, there isn't a rescheduled date available because you've already entered into certain contracts. Not everything is gone and some can be transferred to future dates, but anyway, I hope that answers your question.
Yeah, it does. I think based on what you've said, shared, and thinking about this, I mean, I'm certainly open to giving it another chance. I don't know what else we do in May and June and if that would be, you know, if we have room on the calendar and our staff and stuff.
Now, something that wasn't on here that I do want to, and I just came to me and I apologize to interrupt, but we did have one Clayton restaurant participate. And he was very clear to me that he probably was not going to participate in the future. So just recognize that I don't, you know, and that may change. And we have restaurants opening up here pretty soon. And different coffee shops and so forth, so they may want to participate, but.
I think like 10 days before the event, I think Bridget and I, Bridget was still in the third ward, still is, but in any event, from a restaurateur who said, "I don't know whether this event is going to be on my block or not." And actually, when I contacted Gary, I think the response was, "We're not absolutely certain either." Now, maybe my timing's a little off, but in any event, it was clear that communication about the map and where people were going to be was definitely not great. I will, I won't name the restaurateur, but I think it's probably who Gary's referring to, who basically, after we told him it wasn't going to be in his block, he later said, "Let's have coffee." And when we did, he said, "Hey, I love the art fair. I love Gary Carter. I love everything about the city of Clayton, but don't do this event again because it's not good for restaurants because it's only about food. And so the only people who come to it," this is generalizing, "are people who are going to eat there. Don't come to the restaurants." And everybody else who might normally come to our restaurant, he did say he spoke for some others, "They don't come to the restaurants because they know parking is going to be worse than usual, et cetera, et cetera." So he said it was a very bad weekend for them. I went three times just because I was real curious. I got my wife to go once. She promised she would not go again. But that was mostly because it was very hot. I thought the event was generally underwhelming. It's hard not to compare it with the art fair or with Jazz Fest. You know, I thought the various food offerings were fine. There was like one block that was kind of like everything else. Other booths and some of that, you know, I thought was, I think it's a legal term, kind of schlocky. A lot of T-shirts and beads and other stuff that I thought was just not terribly great. Having said all that, I do think in the idea that it is an attempt to make Clayton more accessible, inclusive, all that, I would probably give it another shot again, since Gary has a long list of things that he, I know, would tell them, "You're going to have to do a lot better job on if you're ever going to make it to year three of this event." So I'd be inclined to give him another shot, but it was definitely underwhelming in many respects.
So my first observation is, is thank you for putting this together. I think this is great feedback and I'd like to see the fact that, you know, we're seeing your assessment of what's occurred. And I understand the reason for doing that is because you're looking for specific feedback about moving forward. But I would love to see this kind of feedback for all of our events, even if you don't want our feedback on it or don't need it, just so that we're aware of what we're doing in order to improve things. And so that's sort of my first comment. My second is that I'd love to see us continue to do things that bring vibrancy to our downtown. And while I recognize Gary's comment that this may be more of a competition than a benefit to many of our downtown merchants, our expenditures in this were significantly less, if not nonexistent, especially compared to all the other major events that we do promote for our downtown. So in the spirit of vibrancy, I'd like to see us continue to do that. I certainly would like to see much better execution, so I like the approach that you're going to take in order to move forward. I'm making an assumption that there wasn't anything that occurred that really poses us, poses any kind of reputational risk to the city with this event? Was there anything that was a concern that, you know, like Gary's comment about the, maybe some of the wares that were being sold? Is there anything that isn't considered to be a good fit or somehow really tarnishes the city?
Well, I mean, I, the, my understanding of the event in the past, they've always had booth vendors, the T-shirts, the beads, the other stuff that we, that Alderman Fader was referencing. But even at our own art fair over the past years, we've had sponsors with booths such as window replacement. We had a, several years ago, we had a, I think it was Colgate toothpaste truck in the, what used to be, or what is now the Forsyth Point Building parking lot. So I don't necessarily think that's uncommon. That is, they're part of their financing structure, like selling beer and running.
My concern would be more along the lines of recent controversy, like a vape shop has a booth or something like that. Just something that our citizens might find to be objectionable.
I think that is certainly something that we could put in a revised contract is approval of vendors.
Okay, so, and then I just want to echo Becky's comment regarding calendar. I'm remembering about the pressure on city staff regarding all the various events we have and then bunching them together. But as, you know, I'm remembering, we've, I know the timing is way off on this, but Cardinal opening day, we weren't so keen on. It'd be great if it was something that would tie into that in that area. Now, I know that's probably way too soon for what he's trying to do, but if it can fit in that calendar time, then that would be terrific, so.
Yeah, choosing a date's not a, I mean, he's proposed May or June. I mean, obviously, we would need to coordinate with him and the Public Works and police that, you know, have the presence there, so that, choosing a new date would be a coordinated effort.
Yeah, so that's all I.
So that answered one question, so I assume he wants to come back? He wants to come back and host it again.
The knowledge that I have as of now.
So I think I'm generally good with what the folks said. I think it's worth trying again. I don't want to, I know we can renew up to five years. There's no point in doing that. I think we just do one year at a time and see how this goes. I was thinking, similar to Rick, phrase it a little differently, but getting to the same place, which is, we didn't spend a lot of time putting it on, I think it could be benefit to the city, but not to the point where it goes below Clayton's standards or Clayton benefits. And I define standards any number of ways, but like, you know, Chichi shops or bong shops, like whatever. Like, there is a base level that like our citizens expect to have at events, and I want to make sure that he can meet that, albeit a subjective, subjective standard. And we still find benefits out of it. And it sounds like we didn't find a lot this year. So I don't want to keep doing it year over year if we all look at each other and like, well, there's no benefit here. But I also think 102 degrees, 110 degrees in the middle of August isn't really going to give us a good.
Yeah, I mean, I don't, I don't want to leave anyone with the impression that I think this sheet represents a staff statement that it was totally not worth it or it was the event producer's fault as to why this happened this way. I mean, I would, I would lay a lot of the quote-unquote blame on the heat, the extreme heat. And the other stuff, I think, was that we encountered is an opportunity to address in a future in a revised contract such as, you know, the footprint, the requirement for certain dates for communication submissions, for permit submissions, right-of-way permits being pulled. And now, having seen the amount of vendors, some kind of supervisory clause on allowing or not allowing certain types.
And I'm good with all that. That was, those are generally my thoughts. It's like, it's, it's worth trying again. It's worth trying it in better weather, as long as we make sure that it's kind of living up to kind of the the standards that we, community kind of tend to accept for events, so.
Any thoughts?
Yeah, I guess I just, you know, like, kind of going off of what Alderman was saying, is what are the benefits for Clayton? Is it just for the vibrancy, for something for people to do? Or is there like a financial benefit for us for hosting these types of things?
Well, I mean, I think that the, the goal is the vibrancy. This body has a stated goal of special events. I can get to you. You may not have been included in that initially since you weren't here. But, you know, I think if you go to the 2040 document to go to the Sasaki plan of 2013, you know, and from my conversations with realtors and property owners of retail spaces, they want more people on the, not on the sidewalk, but on the street in Clayton on a regular basis. And so I think by doing these events, until we get a density of entertainment spaces that are, people are going to, naturally, we are artificially creating that with special events.
Okay. Did like, did you hear back from any of the retail people? Because I know, I guess, restaurants were probably not ideal to go to if you're going to this event to eat. But did you hear from retail?
Yeah, I mean, I heard from, from one retailer in the footprint of the area. And, I mean, he was, he had really good sales from it. But, I mean, that's a specific case. It was Gerard at John's Pipe Shop. You know, and I have heard from some other restaurateurs in the past about these type of things. Some are not necessarily concerned about competing against a food vendor at, on a street festival. You know, but some rightfully might be so is, you know, I don't, I don't want to project my thoughts into their operation when they live and breathe it.
All right, just so, so I guess to better understand, this event is just to help with vibrancy, is to get people out of the houses, downtown.
To bring people that may or may not come to Clayton on a regular basis.
Okay.
Exposure to Clayton.
Thanks.
Thanks, Gary. It was my understanding that they were really going to supply all the, did we have people from Public Works that had to do something? I just thought they were going to do everything. I mean, I think our
They, they did do everything. We did have supervisory roles from Public Works represented there just to maintain Clayton standards. So Matt and his supervisors were there on site just to make sure that, you know, nothing weird was happening with the street and the food vendors. That traffic control was set up. They did use private security, but our officers were also there to enforce Clayton's standards, so.
And they paid for our
Yeah, they did, we have submitted that bill to them and they are in the process.
Sounds good. And I, I mean, I'll just say for everybody on the board, I did see the vendor, whose name is escaping me, Chuck, at the art fair reveal. And this was in advance and he was very, in advance, he was apologetic. I think just because I think it was a struggle, like changing the place, changing how things were going to go was, I think, harder than he anticipated. So, you know, he kept saying, "I promise next year we'll be better, next year we'll be better." So he was definitely well-aware that there were some, going to be some deficiencies this year. I'd certainly support doing it, you know, another year, giving him another chance, you know, just doing just that one-year contract. And, you know, if we can find a way to have it be a different time of year, which everyone has already suggested and which he has suggested, I think it's a good idea, so. Yep, thank you.
Right, so you, just to be clear, you'd like, this body's okay if we can renegotiate a contract that addresses these issues tonight and bring forth?
Yeah, I mean, I think based on everybody's comments, it looks like definitely, I think, it sounded like all of us were at least willing to support looking at it for another year, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, good evening, everybody. Well, is it quite, not quite seven o'clock, but, um, thank you, everybody, for coming this evening. We were just having a discussion on Taste of St. Louis, just getting some feedback from our staff and from the vendor to hear how it went. So we have, just for the benefit of everybody on the board, we have our MIAC students on the, in the back. It's good to see all of you. Cole Craig's on the left, then Carly Selling, and then Harper Sweeney, right, Harper, and then Luke Jeans. And I think Asher Sitzel, or is Asher, trying to remember if Asher's? But I know at least Jack Letman couldn't come because I think he's in Perryville playing soccer, so. But welcome, all of you. And I'll reiterate, you know, if you guys have questions, please feel free to follow up with any of us on particular questions after the meeting. Follow up with me or, you know, if a particular board member, I'm sure anybody would be open to answering any questions you have, so we're happy to have you here. Claire, right, Claire Lynn, yes, so Claire Lynn and Bringer is also here. Claire, I was just mentioning that if you have any questions afterwards, please feel free to reach out, but we're happy to have you guys here.
Really quickly, just before seven, while we're acknowledging new faces in the room, I just want to introduce Myron Burr, who is the new Assistant City Manager. This is his second day here with the city of Clayton. So he just got back from a class at Umsul where he's finishing his Master of Public Administration degree. He's got a master in higher ed, coming from, to us from the Chancellor's office at Umsul. So really excited to have Myron on board. I know it's been an overwhelming couple of days, just trying to get up to speed with things, but we're really excited to have him here and look forward to working with him. So welcome.
Welcome. All right, so we have reached our seven o'clock hour. If the city clerk could call the roll.
Alderwoman Buse, here. Alderwoman Patel, here. Fader, here. Alderman Hummel, here. Alderman Yorg, here. Alderwoman Waldman, here. Mayor McAndrew, here. City Manager Gibson, here. City Attorney Carr, here. Thank you.
Prior to starting our meeting, if there's any person in the audience that has any public requests or comments or petitions that they would like to address the board about, that does Prior to starting our meeting, if there's any person in the audience that has any public requests or comments or petitions that they would like to address the board about that does not have to do with any subject on the agenda, they're welcome to come up now. Good evening, Ann.
Good.
Ann, is that light still on the microphone? I think it is. Is it still green? Is it green?
Green.
Perfect.
Actually, I'm not bitching and complaining. I have some thank yous. And June, you'll have to help me with the names. Of some just recent things that came up kind of about keeping up standards of Clayton. And it had to do with advertising through the city. And I, in my neighborhood, we've had some complaints about advertising benches, which are popping up all over. And I have, because it's me, visual aids. But there's only that to share.
Thanks, Sam.
And I had called talking with some neighbors about some concern about advertising in Clayton, actually in the whole area of the county. It seems to be kind of taking over right now. And I called June to ask about the issue and turns out our city officials, and I'm sorry, I forgot already who.
Our Public Works has been notified and our building department has been notified, Tom O'Meara and Tom Lard.
And I was so delighted that they're already on top of this. And I don't know if you knew what, not what's going on, but what some of the complaints might be, but that's why I included some pictures here. And what this is, is just showing particularly benches that are popping up. Benches, advertising benches all over the place, all up and down Big Bend, all over. They're already in the county, well, where the county, but I mean, they're just everywhere. And I think they're pretty unsightly and kind of cheap looking. And I don't think the kind of thing that we should have. And I also believe they're not permitted. And I wanted to show you some details of some of what these look like. These are just pictures of few on Clayton Road, at the bank, at Schnucks. All over Hanley Road. The, so I called the number and got the owner who was fairly defensive and I just mentioned, so I wouldn't be surprised that there've been some complaints, complaints about what they look like. So in driving around, some of these almost looked like they'd be sheltered, like at a bus stop or a shelter. And I'm just included. Our neighbors in Richmond Heights have wonderful shelters without ads. On Dale, there's particularly beautiful sitting areas. There's no advertising there. There's nice cutaways that people can sit. And I do sympathize. Particularly if you're taking a bus, it'd be nice to be able to sit. It'd be nice to have covering. But these benches are going up all over the place, about in the middle. And I think what brought it home literally was, there's a picture of Big Bend and there's a bench right in front of Tuscany Park. And I wanted to show you some details about it. It went up a few weeks ago and then not long after that, the advertising went on it. And if you saw it up, it's hanging over the sidewalk. This is already, as you know, a pretty dangerous street and the sidewalk is already, you know, too narrow to, and this is, this is the safer end of it. And it also, I mean, if you look at the picture of the one, the close up of the bench in front of Tuscany, it, it looks kind of trashy, but if you look closer, the thing is chained. There's a picture of the chain and padlock that's holding the thing down. And apparently none of this is permitted, but I think it would be nice to not have any of it. And the one reason is, oh, they also, this one in front of Tuscany, they even tied it to a residence fence. And I don't know if it's cable tie, it just looks like cord. But I, I, that's pretty unsightly and not nice enough. But I do sympathize with having obviously a place to sit if you're waiting for something. But there's not even room. We requested a trash can there because it's right about the right time when you get away from White Castle and there's always blue and white bags there. And we used to have a trash can, but there's not enough width even on that sidewalk for a trash can again. So certainly not for Ben's bench as well. And there's a picture toward the end of the bank on Clayton Road. I can't even remember the name of, but it's kind of in disrepair. There's a picture of a little fence, a brick wall that's falling down. It's not well maintained, but in that same, there's a white arrow pointing to one of those advertising benches. And I don't know, these things seem to accumulate if you're not keeping track of them. Toward, after that, there's a tiny little sign that I just labeled it's a typical ad, Junk Wisely. And people are sticking these H wire things all over the place with their ads. Things like Christmas tree lights and stuff that they never take down. And the only reason it's worrisome to me is once you have a little Junk Wisely sign there, it doesn't take long for more signs to appear on little corners. And the shop owners, say if I was seeing some on Big Bend at, I can't remember the street, but before you get to Dale, there were some signs that Christmas tree or Christmas, Christmas house lighting. And some more ads came in. There was for Masonry for, it just brand new ones on Big Bend for roof repair, of course. But the people putting them there, it's sort of in no man's land. I don't, can they do it? I don't know. I guess if they can put it there, I guess I can pull them up. So on the last page, I wanted to show you what, I don't know if you remember these signs. Those yellow and black ones that were all over Clayton Road and Big Bend. So this is the trunk of my car. This is one pickup and you're welcome. But that was 25, it's usually 24, 25 at a time. They were all along, well, my work route went along Clayton Road. They were all up and down Big Bend as far as the opera theater. And, but it was a take like that anytime I'd go out and I tried to recycle the little metal things. Kinko's doesn't want them. But nobody's really in charge of that. So, which I get, we're plenty busy enough, but I don't like looking at them. And certainly don't like looking at gun show signs, but anything where somebody's just plopping it in the ground, ignoring it, they never pick it up. My suggestion is we don't, I don't think anyone ever applies for these, but I would certainly like to see them discouraged, especially cheap bench advertising. So thank you to the Public Works people and all that. It was very, what I called, they were already on it the day before. So thanks.
Ann, thank you for your comments and thank you for the pictures. And thank you for keeping our neighborhoods clean. We appreciate it.
One sign at a time.
Yeah. Thank you. All right. We will get to the first matter on our agenda, which is our consent agenda. Mr. City Manager, there's any?
Nothing to report on consent agenda. We got some items this evening.
I'll open the discussion. Does anybody have any questions or comments related to anything on the consent agenda?
Alderwoman Buse?
I know that the board approved the consent agenda.
Second.
I had two quick questions. Sorry.
Oh, sure. Go ahead.
Just on, on the changing the parking ambassadors, do we have a cost of generally what that's going to be? I know he said it was going to be relatively minor, but do we have a sense, David, of what?
It's on a limited number of uniforms. We replace uniforms on an annual basis. So that would be in the budget for October 1st. So no additional costs there. The only other cost would be changing the decals on the front of their vehicles. And that's a limited expense. So I would think somewhere around maybe a hundred dollars.
Okay. I mean, the only other question I had, and this is maybe this would be always phrased and never looked at it, but on the, on the liquor license, it says, we're going to grant to sell all kinds of intoxicating liquor at retail by package. Is that retail by package? Does that mean that they can sell like a case of beer or like?
You can carry it out. That's correct.
Gotcha. Okay. I actually make sure.
Be consumed on the premises by package would be a carryout.
Okay. That was all I had. I just had clarifications I understood.
Alderman Peter?
I just wanted to add, it's probably unnecessary, but since the, if the community doesn't, doesn't think we do actually look at who gets appointed to our boards. I know the mayor talked to Mr. Van Hoft and since I'm a zoning junkie, I, I did really want to meet him before I voted for him. So he's an impressive guy with good development experience. So I think he'll be a very good, a very good addition. Wanted to add that.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right. Alderwoman Buse, maybe try that motion again.
I know that the board approved the consent agenda.
Second.
Any discussion?
Alderwoman Buse?
Aye.
Alderwoman Patel?
Aye.
Alderman Fader?
Aye.
Alderman Hummel?
Aye.
Alderman York?
Aye.
Alderwoman Waldman?
Aye.
Mayor McAndrew?
Aye.
Thank you.
The next item on our agenda is related to next year's property tax levies. Mr. City Manager?
Yes. So we held the public hearing and introduced this bill at the last meeting. We do go through a board of equalization process and then we get the final numbers. It's always like this at the last minute. These are actually due to the state tomorrow. Our tax rates for the year. So we did have a little bit of a fluctuation since introduction, which is typical. However, they weren't significant changes. So we have updated those numbers and the ordinance that's before you this evening, and we will report this to the state tomorrow.
All right. I'll open the discussion. Does anybody have any questions or comments from the audience? From up on the board?
Just a curiosity question. I noticed that the, while all of the numbers were reduced a little bit, the Clayton Special Business District was reduced by over 50%. I'm guessing that as I looked into the document further, there was a reduction, a significant reduction in the, I think the residential rate in the special business district. Anyway, I just wondered what drove such a big change compared to all the other categories?
We have Karen Dilber online. Karen, I don't know if you got any explanation from the county on that change in the numbers? I would imagine that's the valuation coming in higher on those properties, the residential properties within the CBD.
I'm going to pull her over.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes. Yes.
Okay. So to answer your question, we really don't get an explanation. All we get are lump sum numbers of this is your residential, this is your commercial, and this is your personal property. We can ask. But I, I can't guarantee that they'll provide us with anything.
It was more just that Karen, the, the aspect that, that the, when you broke out the categories, which were very helpful on, it's on page 19 of our document, where it shows the, the impact on city general revenue, the police building debt service and special business district. It just struck me as odd that one was affected on a percentage basis significantly more than the others. And I just didn't know if, because it's a special business district, perhaps there was something unique about the special business district assessed values that made that occur.
Not that I'm aware of. I can look into it further if you'd like, but they're, they're really, it's, it's just the, yeah, just the assessed value. A lot of times in a given year, new construction will come in different than we expected to, but that was not the case this year.
Did anything come online that would have thrown that off, like foresight point or any of that that would just throw in the?
Because this is just going to be the, the residential number that had the fluctuations. So if you look at 22, 23 and 24, it was a constant number at 82 cents. That first reading, we had it at, or it was eight cents. I'm sorry. We were just over 10 cents on that, which is a pretty high number. I'm not surprised to see that rate rolled back because we would have had, I don't know that Beamerson Place was fully occupied January 1st and open. That would be one that we would have had at least a partial assessment on that would have hit the books for the first time. I know there were some other condo construction within the CBD or the, the special business district potentially that came online, but that's what would have skewed that. Is basically the valuation would have needed to go up for the rate to go down. So yeah, that initial number, the initial calculation that we got from them. I think that 10 cent number is high when you have new properties that are coming online, and that's why you're seeing the big drop. We can figure out exactly, or find out exactly what it is, but I'm, I'm sure it's a new property coming online that's pulling that number back.
Yeah. The, the, the spirit isn't necessarily, it isn't that big of a number overall. It's just more the soundness of all of our calculations and how we assess these things and, and just not being surprised by things. That's all.
And I'll also say that the residential portion of the special business district is probably the most subject to fluctuations based on individual properties because there are so few residential properties within that particular area. So, you know, if a new building comes online citywide, it's not going to fluctuate that much. But when you think about the number of residential buildings there are within this downtown area, it's really not that many. So just one new building or one major renovation to one of those structures can actually skew that, that valuation and ultimately the rate.
And as far as the calculations go, it, it's really, it's very error proof unless we type in the wrong number. We take the numbers that St. Louis County provides us and then we put them into the template that I, I don't know if you looked at the email that I sent out after the last meeting and we drop it in and it auto calculates everything for us.
Thanks, Karen. Does anybody else? Does anybody else have any other questions? Comments? I believe Alderwoman Buse, she'll read something as amended.
I introduce.
No. Not for this, no?
Yes, because it was amended.
Because it was amended.
Oh, sorry.
So you'll introduce bill number, I think, as amended.
I introduce bill number 7090.1 as amended, approving the property tax levies for tax year 2025 to be read for the second time by title only.
Second.
Any discussion? Mr. Ms. City Attorneys, excuse me.
An ordinance loving and establishing the rate of annual taxes for the general municipal purposes, police building debt service, general obligation debt service and special business district purposes to be collected by the city of Clayton, Missouri for the year 2025.
Alderwoman Buse?
Aye.
Alderwoman Patel?
Aye.
Alderman Fader?
Aye.
Alderman Hummel?
Aye.
Alderman York?
Aye.
Alderwoman Waldman?
Aye.
Mayor McAndrew?
Aye.
Thank you.
The next item on our agenda is a second reading of our fiscal year 2026 budget, our operating and capital improvements budget. Just for people online and people in the audience, we spend a lot of time reviewing the budget throughout August. We have multiple meetings about it. So this is just kind of the final part of it. So this is not obviously the first time that all of us have looked at the budget. So. But in that vein, does anybody in the audience or anybody on the board have any other further questions about our budget? And, you know, and again, for people in the audience, if you're looking at the budget, we will have some deficit spending at the beginning because of the tornado, but hopefully we will recoup most of that in about a year. So. If there's no comments or questions from up here, Alderwoman Buse?
I would like to introduce bill number 7091, approving the fiscal year 2026 operating and capital improvement budget to be read for the second time by title only.
Second.
Any discussion? The City Attorney?
An ordinance adopting an annual budget for fiscal year 2026 commencing on October 1st, 2025 and appropriating funds pursuant thereto.
Alderwoman Buse?
Aye.
Alderwoman Patel?
Aye.
Alderman Fader?
Aye.
Alderman Hummel?
Aye.
Alderman York?
Aye.
Alderwoman Waldman?
Aye.
Mayor McAndrew?
Aye. The next item on our agenda is a change order with respect to some repairs. The next item on our agenda is a change order with respect to some repairs that we're doing at the parking garage at 10 South Brentwood.
Yes, here we go again. This is the, the third deck of the parking garage at the police building, which is 10 South Brentwood. You're very familiar with this project at this point. And so there was one last corner of the, the deck that needed to be treated before it was covered with the, the coating that we're putting down ultimately. And we found once again that we had post tension cables that were broken in that particular area. This was not perceived by the contractor, so we need to repair those cables as well for the structural integrity of the parking deck. So change order three is the last batch of post tension cables that would need to be repaired. I can say that this is, that at this point, the entire deck is basically being redone with this change order. There's no more surface to uncover and find new things. That being said, we've come back to the board now three times with change orders to this particular project as this has just grown as we've opened this, this deck up. So we did include a, a potential change order four, which is basically a contingency amount for the rest of the project. It's an additional amount of $25,000. We don't know that we'll have to spend it, but approving that this evening would prevent a case where we'd have to come to the board for a fourth time to talk about this parking deck. But change order three, it's $37,200 additional for the project. Should take care of everything else, but we have a contingency amount of $25,000 that will absolutely carry us through the end of this. So I want to remind everybody again, we've got decks one and two in that same parking garage that are, you know, it's a budgeted project for 26. So when we get to that, we'll see what happens when we start to open it up. The nice thing about those decks is they're covered. So the deck we're dealing with right now keeps a lot of the rain and other things off of the other decks. And what we found is when that deck was built, they put calcium chloride in the, the concrete so that it would cure quickly. The problem is when that reacts with water that would get into the actual concrete, then it would erode and degrade the post tension cables that you need for the, the structure itself. So what we found is those structures, those, those cables have actually been damaged over time. We're hoping that on decks one and two, there hasn't been enough water to actually get deep enough into that concrete to degrade those potential cables. So, you know, we'll go through this again with, with decks one and two. I'm hoping we'll do it without a bunch of change orders, but the change orders before this evening will close out this project. So this would be another ordinance for the parking deck. Change order three amount $37,200 and additional contingency of $25,000 is the request this evening. And with that, we have Matt Malik, our Public Works Director here, if you have any questions about the, the project.
Thank you. I'll open the discussion. Does anybody have any questions up here?
I'll just, yeah, I mean, it's the third changeover. It's certainly not fun. And to do an additional one, just to make sure you don't have to do it again, is, it's still, yeah, I think for everybody, it's not a good situation. I do worry about one and two, they're covered, but they're not watertight. So I worry that it's just a matter of time, even if when that work begins, if things look like they're okay. Or if we're concerned, I don't know anything about post tension cables, but, you know, let's just go in with our eyes open, what, what costs may be there. So I don't really have any questions. It's just an unfortunate situation. So, thank you.
My question is trying to remember, and I have the utmost respect for you and Mr. Malik, but I believe when we approved change order two, we were told it was the last, and we knew it, and we'd uncovered everything, and nothing else was going to be, there was nothing else that could potentially be uncovered. And so I'm trying to figure out whether I misunderstood that or like what is the, like, what is it about this area? Was it like partially covered, so we thought it would be okay? And it wasn't or?
It was the ramp that actually leads down to the alley, and they were separate post tension cables that went through this ramp area because of the grade change. So the, the portions we had uncovered before and had exposed were on the deck. This was the ramp that connects, that's kind of almost its separate structure, but goes down to the alley. They found some delaminated concrete, and as they began to remove it, it was really in that area. I believe it was worse than what was on the deck. So part of this cost was just putting scaffolding to secure it while they repaired it. So when we were talking about it before, it was the, the full deck on the third level, where this is a small section of ramp that's, I'm recalling from memory, maybe 30 by 30 or so is a, an entry point to that third level deck.
All right. I'm just trying, I like, yeah, so I, I just don't, I mean, I don't know if it's, I'm trying to figure out, like, is this the contractor? Is this us? Like, is this a contractor we've worked with before? Like, are there, I mean, water flows down, so the water will have flowed down the ramps to the second level. So why would we think this isn't actually going to be on the second level based on, you know, like, or what's our level of confidence that it won't be? I, I don't know.
I guess a couple of things there. The ramp drains to the alley, which then drains away. They don't, it's not an internal ramp structure on this building, so it doesn't flow down to the next level.
Okay.
The concrete will have those additives in it that will cause some of that degradation. As we get to the lower levels, as David mentioned, there's less permeation from the rainwater, and it's, it's been protected. The lower level actually has a, partially an asphalt surface, so they're not dealing with as much concrete. When the contractor's out now, we are planning to, what they call the, the process for it is you chain drag the area. We're going to be doing more of that with the upcoming project so that we can get a renewed number for that from when we last scoped it.
Okay.
We, from speaking with the structural engineer on the, the project that was doing, that helped us with the inspections, they were pretty surprised just by the number of cables too. So those are things that can, you know, make or break projects. They have an anticipation going into them sometimes, but you never know. And doing destructive testing to, to check each one, you could, you could miss the cables and not even really know if they're deteriorated in select locations. We did a project similar to this, I think it was about 15 years ago, that replaced some concrete on the top level, and we didn't run into as many cables, so just it wasn't anticipated. To, to your question about the contractor, Western Specialty Contractors is a reputable company. We've used many times for these types of work. I think it's not an answer, but I think it's one of those things that is not quite foreseeable, and we don't have a lot of options to move forward in another direction.
Thank you, I appreciate it. And one thing you said that I think sounds like a potential improvement, it's this chain dragging thing that you'll be able to do earlier in the process to get a better idea of whether it's much bigger than we thought, like, is that something?
Done that before on this project when we were originally scoping it a few years ago, and we did it for the third level as well. So I don't want it to give too much hope, but we're going to renew.
No, thank you. Yeah, that's all I have.
While you're up there, decks one and two, where are they slated? I mean, is it next fiscal year that we're looking into them? Okay.
We're going to give a break. We're, we're wearing out our welcome over there right now, so we're going to probably target, we'll wait a few months.
Okay.
Yeah, what Matt's talking about, just so everybody knows as well, with the, the municipal maintenance facility, so the Public Works and Parks Building that we're about to start construction on, we've moved all of our personnel out of there, and a lot of the Public Works personnel is occupying those unoccupied, they're occupying those unoccupied floors on the upper level of this building. So not only do you have your typical police department parking going on over there, but we have Public Works employees. I mean, there's a huge parking demand on that building right now, and we're, we're, we don't have the third deck. We don't have a portion of the second deck because it's underneath the construction that's going on. So we've actually taken over a ton of street parking around the building just to try to accommodate this. So the sooner we can get this project done, you know, the better. But this has definitely been a frustration for, for us as well, because operationally, this is really causing some headaches. And as Matt said, it's just, it's one of those things where we just have to do it. This supports a lot of weight, not only with cars and things, but also that entire solar array that we have at the police building. That's all on top of this, this deck as well. So there's a lot of weight up there, so we need to make sure that all those cables are in good shape. It's a, it's been a trying process.
Alderman Fader, do you have any?
I have no, no questions.
This project reminds me of the proverbial old house that turns into a money pit. And so if I recall correctly, you have, David, you have let us know in the past that if you could get out of the parking garage business, you would. And so I think we still have some other parking garages. And so to the extent that you can facilitate our exit from the parking garage business, I would be supportive of that.
We'd love to. We have one big one, and I hate to see what the reconstruction cost will be when the day comes.
As a guy who owns and bought a money pit of a house, I completely get that. My only question is just for my recollection sake, what was the original budget? And what are we actually thinking we're going to be sinking in all in? So how much over budget are, are we expecting to be when this is all said and done?
The original budget was $175,000 executed on the contract, and we think we'll be approximately, assuming the cables come in like we, we think they're going to, 430,000.
Okay, so that column is there, so the 430, 798. Okay, so we're 300, 300,000 over?
With this change.
A little late, a little less than that. Yeah, 250, 260, something like that, okay.
That's assuming not the contingency, that you don't go into the additional amendment.
That's correct.
Yeah.
Okay, that's all. Thank you.
Yeah, no questions.
Anybody in the audience? Their hands up. No. Alderwoman Buse.
I introduce bill number 7096, approving change order number three for the 10 South Brentwood Boulevard Parking Garage to be read for the first time by title only.
Second.
Any discussion? Madam City Attorney?
An ordinance approving a change order to the contract with Western Waterproofing Company Incorporated, doing business as Western Specialty Contractors for the eastern phase of the 10 South Brentwood Third Level Parking Garage Repair Project.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I move that the board give unanimous consent to consideration for adoption of bill number 7096 on the day of its introduction.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Let the minutes reflect that the board has given unanimous consent.
I introduce bill number 7096, approving change order number three for the 10 South Brentwood Boulevard Parking Garage to be read for the second time by title only.
Second.
Discussion? City Attorney?
An ordinance approving a change order to the contract with Western Waterproofing Company Incorporated, doing business as Western Specialty Contractors for the eastern phase of the 10 South Brentwood Third Level Parking Garage Repair Project.
Alderwoman Buse.
Alderwoman Patel. Aye.
Alderman Fader.
Aye.
Alderman Hummel.
Aye.
Alderman York.
Aye.
Alderwoman Waldman.
Aye.
Mayor McAndrew.
Aye.
Thank you.
The next item on our agenda is an intergovernmental agreement with MSD to help alleviate some areas of the city that are prone to flooding.
Yes, in May of 2025, the City of Clayton applied for Operations Maintenance and Capital Improvements Program, or OMCI funding, from the Metropolitan Sewer District, MSD, to construct drainage improvements at three locations in the city, which were Francis Place, Wydon Boulevard, and West Polo Drive. The improvements are designed to help alleviate recurrent nuisance flooding at each location. The projects were approved for funding by the MSD Board in August of 2025. The city received notification of the approval and was provided with the program agreements in September. The total program project cost for all three projects is estimated to be $359,500, and MSD's OMCI program will reimburse 100% of the costs, including engineering, design services, and construction. The revenue and expenditure for these projects are included in the, in the fiscal year, the now approved fiscal year 2026 Capital Improvement Plan. The project designs are expected to include pavement removal and replacement, installation of additional storm sewer inlets and sewers, and associated regrading and restoration work. Staff recommends that the Board of Aldermen approve the ordinance authorizing execution of the three intergovernmental agreements with MSD for the construction of the related drainage improvement projects and approving administrative actions related thereto. So there were three separate exhibits that were contained within the packet. One question I did receive from an Alderman had to do with the fact that in the agreement, it talks about that MSD agreed to allocate up to 50% of the Deer Creek OMCI sub-district revenue, which is a statement in there. So in the RBA, you know, as I stated, they'll, they'll actually reimburse 100% of the project costs. For those of you that were on the board about a year ago or so, MSD came to us about the Deer Creek OMCI, and then also the OMCI for University City. And they asked the city, because they were asking every city, if we still wanted to receive some sort of OMCI funding. And it had to be declared basically on a watershed basis what the cities wanted to do. Ultimately, in the Deer Creek watershed, MSD allowed, agreed to allocate 50% of those pre-existing OMCI funds going forward. So after the passage of Prop S, they retained that 50% program in place. So that's what the agreement here is talking about, but we will get 100% reimbursement.
Just want to make sure that that was the case.
Put that explanation out there. Yep. With that, we do have Matt Malik again here to answer any questions you have on this.
Thank you. I'll open the discussion. Does anybody have any questions or comments from the board?
I just have one question. We've identified three projects here. Are there any other recurrent nuisance flooding areas in the city that are, that need to be addressed at a later date? Or is this the three that, I mean, obviously the three most critical, but are there any other areas?
The areas we see for this type of flooding are very localized and not as widespread as you might see through other parts of the MSD District. Traditionally, we haven't utilized these funds, but when these projects became aware to us that there were issues, we started looking at what we could do to address them using this program. One other location that we're aware of that's a recurrence is on Topten, but MSD has a project that they're carrying out themselves using funds from another OMCI. It's called the OMCI Central District Fund that was collected many years ago and still sitting in reserve that they're, I believe, going to be able to utilize for that project. And they're, they're administering that project, and the schedule right now is 2028.
So this is the first time that we've accessed funds for something like this, is that right?
This is the first time we've utilized the OMCI funds that I'm aware of. They've only been, it's a variable tax rate that they turned back up a few years ago. Whenever we were having this discussion previously, the board had made a decision at that time that the, the regional issues where the money would go back to were probably a larger priority than maybe some of the more localized things we saw here.
Thanks for identifying those through and getting, getting this for us. Okay, thanks.
No comments or questions?
Matt, just a question, since Polo Drive's having its annual meeting in about a month. They're usually well attended and very inquisitive. I just wanted to make sure whether the trustees of Polo are, have been made aware or are going to be made aware sometime soon that this improvement is being made.
We haven't reached out to anybody on these projects. I think some people are aware of them. They, we carried out some survey design last year ourselves with some internal design to see what was possible, but we will have more work ongoing for the engineering design and probably a bit more survey to see what the possible solutions are. Right now, we don't have anything to share as what the work and improvement is going to be, but I anticipate that'll change over the next few months, once we execute a task order for the engineering.
I ask that in part because I suspect if we tell them what we're doing in Polo, they will find some other spot within Polo that they think is equally in need of some kind of enhancement. So I just wanted to make sure we're prepared for whatever questions might come our way. And we can say, you know, we'll ask Mr. Malik and get back to you, but I was hoping for something more that we could of substance provide them.
We, we made these selections based off of issues we were aware of that have been recurrent from a number of years. So if somebody comes up with another location, that'll start hitting the ticker and be a future project, it sounds like.
All right, we'll cover it. Thanks.
Matt, but just to follow up on Gary, but it looks like, I mean, you've identified what inlet will get like fixed or like, because on the drawings, it had a specific area that is where it's prone to flooding. So you mean they just haven't engineering, engineered the drawings for what will change or?
We did some very, very minor surveying and in-house design. We have a stormwater expert on staff from their past career that carried out a potential option, but it wasn't a full design with a full survey, which we will have carried out, that may come up with some different alternatives.
But it will probably identify. But it will probably identify that, I mean, that particular area. It's just then figuring out how that will happen, whether it's enlarging the drain or, you know, because it just seems like whenever pavement gets put down, like, you know, right now, the inlet, you know, is very narrow. So, I mean,
There'll probably be a reconstruction of that inlet, for instance. Yeah, it'll be a combination of factors and they'll analyze the flow, not just in that inlet, but how it has an impact downstream. Those MSD has different requirements when you're modifying their structures of what you have to show for an analysis that we don't necessarily have that capability to do. But we have some ideas of what we thought would be potential solutions on those plans. But there'll be a more solidly developed plan from an engineer.
That we would contract out with.
That we, okay, then we put that out to bid.
Got it. Okay, thank you.
No comments. The only thing I had in, in the memo had mentioned that MSD had already approved it, so we can't make any modifications. I don't see why we would, but I'm just curious, is there anything we should be aware of in the contract that we would be living with when we approve this?
We've approved these intergovernmental agreements before and our council reviews them. I think MSD has always made that statement from the back and forth perspective. I'm not aware of any, but I know I sent them for Kevin's review.
Thanks. That's all I had. I just wanted to make sure we weren't walking into something that we at least need to be aware of.
No comments.
Any comments from the audience or online? Alderwoman abuse.
I would like to introduce Bill number 7097 approving an agreement with Metropolitan Sewer District for the Operations Maintenance and Capital Improvement Program. To be read for the first time by title only.
Second.
Any discussion? The City Attorney?
An ordinance approving intergovernmental cooperation agreements with the Metropolitan St. Louis Sewer District MSD for the funding of three drainage projects located in the City of Clayton, Missouri, and actions related thereto.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I move that the board give unanimous consent to consideration for adoption of Bill number 7097 on the day of its introduction.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Let the minutes reflect that the board has given unanimous consent.
Like to introduce Bill number 7097 approving an agreement with Metropolitan Sewer District for the Operations Maintenance and Capital Improvement Program to be read for the second time by title only.
Second.
Any discussion? City Attorney?
An ordinance approving intergovernmental cooperation agreements with the Metropolitan St. Louis Sewer District MSD for the funding of three drainage projects located in the City of Clayton, Missouri, and actions related thereto.
Alderwoman abuse.
Aye.
Alderwoman Patel.
Aye.
Alderman Fader.
Aye.
Alderman Hummel.
Aye.
Alderman York.
Aye.
Alderwoman Waldman.
Aye.
Mayor McAndrew.
Aye.
Thank you.
The next item on our agenda is a, looking at standards for addressing the Board of Aldermen and the Plan Commission. Mr. City Manager?
Yes, thank you. This is, as you said, an ordinance establishing standards for public participation. It is common practice for local governments to have standards and rules for public participation in meetings. The City of Clayton does not currently have any adopted standards for addressing the Board of Aldermen, Plan Commission, or the Architectural Review Board. The attached ordinance would establish such standards. The proposed ordinance is intended to achieve the following objectives. First, promote and organize an orderly process for public comment and public hearings. Ensure that all individuals wishing to address the Board of Aldermen and Plan Commission or Architectural Review Board have an opportunity to promote focused discussion and debate and to enhance record-keeping during public hearings and open forums through the use of speaker cards. Generally, members of the public under this ordinance would be required or will be required to provide a completed speaker card with basic information before speaking. Comments during an open forum must relate to matters under the city's control. And so when we say open forum here, we would change the agenda where we currently say public requests and petitions. That would be the open forum portion of the agenda, which is a very common way to state that. Applicants will be limited to 10 minutes for their initial presentations, and public speakers will be limited to three minutes. Speakers will only be permitted to speak once on a specific topic. Speakers are not to address individuals on the dais, and board members and staff will not be expected to respond to questions at the meeting. There are also basic provisions related to written communications from the public and the receipt of public protests and petitions. Staff recommends that the Board of Aldermen approve the attached ordinance. I did have, you know, a few conversations with members of the board on this. I know that there are some policy things to talk through here, so we look forward to that conversation. Stephanie Carr is briefed on this as well. I know that her firm represents a number of cities that have similar things in place already. It's not an uncommon practice to have time limits and speaker card requirements and those sorts of things. So look forward to the conversation.
Thank you. So I'll open the discussion. There might be people in the audience that want to reflect on this or comment on this. But maybe if we could just go around to the board and we can just kind of hear what people's thoughts are, I think that might be helpful in framing any, you know, comments that people in the audience might have as well.
Sure. I think this is a good move forward for our board if we adopt this. In my experience, the, you know, these, this kind of a structure around public comment can actually allow more people to be heard and also keep our attention spans to actually hear what people are saying versus having, you know, one, one speaker drone on for a long period of time over some similar points. Also, it's helpful that I think every one of us on this board is accessible to, to people who want to comment on something that's coming before the board or happening in the city. So, you know, again, I think it is best practices at this point in time, and I would support us adopting it. Something else that is, that some boards do that is not here, one of the things is putting a time limit on how long there can be public speaking at the beginning of a meeting. And I, I don't see the need for that at this point in time. I think that this addresses the structure that we need to ensure that we actually get as, as much comment and input from our, from our city as possible.
Thank you. Alderwoman Patel.
Yeah, thanks. I have some concerns about this. I think that the way that we have run our meetings, since I've been paying attention to the Board of Aldermen, has overwhelmingly been very effective. I came to a lot of Board of Aldermen meetings before I was an elected official because that's what I was interested in doing. And I spoke and I appreciated the opportunity when I did. And so I'm really thinking of it that way, as well as thinking about experiences I've had speaking in front of other boards that have different kinds of guidelines. So I support establishing improvements to identifying speakers. I'd like to see us ensure that we have the ability for people to, like, specify, that people can notify us in advance that they intend to speak through an online form or a speaker card in person, as well as, like, at the podium if they choose to come up. We can't always predict, like, what topics we'll be discussing on, and I don't think, or like where the discussion will go, and I don't think we should limit, like, prevent speakers from coming up when that happens, if they might not have planned to talk previously. So I support limiting the amount of time folks can speak and ensuring that their comments are germane to the topic under consideration. But I am concerned that some of what's in here, it just feels, it feels to me like an overreaction to our lack of guidelines. And a little bit like a solution in search of a problem. So the, to that point, I would like to eliminate or rework, if, if you think I'm just misunderstanding, the comments that say elected officials and staff will not respond. I believe that we have had lots of examples of us being able to answer questions that people ask. Certainly, if we can't answer them, we won't and we'll follow up. And you have done that, Mayor, in the past. And there have even been times I feel like where I have been able to ask someone a question to make sure I understand the point they're trying to make, as I try to think about ways that we could address their concerns. And I don't want to be prevented from doing that. So I would like to see that reworked. I think we could say something like elected officials and city staff may not and are not required to respond to questions or something like that. That's just, you know, I'm not a lawyer. Y'all think about that. I do think that we should state that business matters, will be, like, will allow speakers. We have always done that. You did it tonight. Our entire agenda has been business matters, not public hearing, and you're inviting folks to speak. And I, I think the fact that it isn't officially a public hearing by that legal definition doesn't mean that we don't get value from hearing from the public on it. So I would want to see that specified. I think that where we use the word rebuttal, we should replace it with something like response or follow-up. Because I don't think that when people are answering or commenting on each other's things, it's like a rebuttal. Like, that implies a conflict or attention that isn't necessarily there. And I would like to see us allow some follow-up. Potentially, like, that someone could come up, maybe only for a second time, and maybe for a shorter period of time. But I know there have been times where someone has come up with, like, a new question or something to consider that hadn't been brought up before. And I wouldn't want to preclude that, although I wouldn't want it to be, like, infinite. So those are my thoughts. And some of the changes I'd like to see, I'll be happy to offer amendments or have this come up back to us at another time, depending on how we want to present that, once we hear from everybody else.
Becky, or Alderwoman Patel, thank you. I mean, I think those are some great comments. I'm wondering, there's a, there is language here under addressing individual members. It says, "In general, board members and city staff will not respond to questions." But I think in general, at least, is qualifying language, but do you think it should go stronger than that? I, you know, so I think it at least allows that ability. But then I think if there's somebody, like, for instance, the way Anna dressed us tonight, she might have had a question for us that we couldn't necessarily answer, you know?
I think we can say, my, my preference would be that we just make that, that we don't say that. If we feel like we want, like, I think if people come up and ask a question and we aren't in a position to answer it, then I'm really comfortable with you saying, like, we can follow up with you or just not saying anything. I mean, we don't have to. You don't have to answer every question you're asked as, like, a person, right? But I think very often we can, and it allows our residents to feel like it was worth their time to come here and talk to us, because there's, like, simple questions that we can answer really easily. And so, and that's been my experience much more than us, like, I don't see us very often getting badgered with questions that we completely can't answer or are, like, I don't, I just, that isn't what the experience has been. So I wouldn't want to, like, write something that is imagining that.
Yeah, and I think in my view, I wouldn't want that to change. Like, I wouldn't necessarily want to not answer a simple question that somebody might have. So I, I, I mean, I agree with you that I, I don't want it to be where we are all stone-faced up here and nobody's answering any questions in response to something that could be easily answered, you know? I want, like you said, I want, I want to be able to help our residents and feel like they got something out of the meeting. So I, I agree with you, so.
So I think when we started this discussion a couple of weeks ago, the, the rules that were going to be promulgated just related to the Board of Aldermen, and, you know, I'm, I'm happy to see them extend to the Plan Commission and the ARB. And from my experience, most of the meetings that involve a lot of discussion between the public and the board are actually at the Plan Commission and the ARB level, notwithstanding Washington University and Concordia, which obviously most of the discussion was at the Board of Aldermen. But I think generally, it's at the Plan Commission and the ARB. And I think David, when I talked to him, I think also mentioned the idea that in addition to whatever else we're doing, it would be very helpful to have sort of at least guidelines for the Plan Commission and the ARB in terms of the order in which presentations are made, comments are made from the audience, at least my perception. Going to those meetings fairly often, that there's, it isn't always done in the same way. That is the order of presentations or comments or comments from the board. And I think it would definitely help the public if they understood exactly at each meeting, it's going to follow the same order. I think I had three residents from Board Three contact me about these, Mr. Illabrecht, who's here, and two others. And I think there were initial concerns that somehow we're trying to repress comment at meetings because that seems to be what people are doing. I certainly think that's not the case here. My experience from my prior life, having gone to, I, I'm sure, probably 30 different communities in St. Louis County, is that this process of, of people filling out cards, having time limits, this is really standard stuff. Now, that's not the reason to do it. We shouldn't just do it because other people do it. But one of my observations also is that when you don't have any sort of guidelines or rules, what happens is that you, you actually limit public discussion rather than enhance it because invariably, meetings that drag on for two or three hours cause a lot of people to decide at some point that they're, they really didn't plan to skip dinner. And so they go home and they never, they never speak at all. So I, I don't have any problems with the time limits. I think there should be a distinction between an applicant and a resident. I think that would all work. I think whatever we come up with, the thing to do is to put these guidelines in place and see how it works. And to the extent we find that it, it doesn't work well, it's very easy, within two weeks, we could probably change the ordinance or change how we operate. So on balance, I think it's a good idea. I, I think it is important that everyone obviously be given an opportunity to speak. I actually think the time limits are very helpful, as one who sometimes goes on at length. I, I will say that just from my own times in making presentations, that what happens when you have a time limit and you know you have a time limit, you first of all tend to write your remarks down, as opposed to simply getting up and saying whatever comes to mind. I think it makes you get to your points a lot sooner. So I don't think there's a problem with time limits. I don't think in, in any event, three minutes is not enough for an applicant. I think 10 minutes is enough. It's trickier at Plan Commission and the ARB because there's more give and take between the members of the commission and the applicants. There tends to be more questions, and I think we'd have to be aware of that, that sometimes those time limits don't work as well. But again, I think that could be worked out. But, you know, I'm happy to see this done. I agree with the comment that simply to say, "We're never going to answer questions," I don't think we need that. But I think the whole point is that, is to try to make this, this is not an interrogation of the board by the public. This is an effort to get information, and that should be our goal. And by the same token, people come to, to the, to participate, should feel like they could get an answer when it's possible to, to get one. So I think that goes both ways. It's just, we don't want to make this into an absolute. This is not high school debate, so.
And I, Gary, just because you remarked on the Plan Commission, you know, I think it's important too, because in the Plan Commission, you have, you know, somebody coming up who's perhaps talking about they're building a house. And there are neighbors in the audience who then come up and make a statement or have questions. And they're, you know, to have that, and then they clarify. So I, I am a little concerned about the not allowing people to come up more than once because there might be that, you know, somebody might have a follow-up question. Or they might come up and say, "Hey, that all sounds great. I support now that this house is going to go up next to me." You know, I think that's important for, you know, commission members to hear. So I will say that our City Attorney, Kevin O'Keefe, you know, I, I liked the idea of perhaps allowing some discretion, whether that's the, you know, Steve Lichtenfeld, who's our Chair of the Plan Commission, or if it's me, or if it's Susan, if I'm not here, that discretion. There is some concern about allowing discretion, because then if you allow it once, you know, so he's a little bit more concerned about allowing that discretion in the ordinance, which, you know, Stephanie, I don't know if you want to speak to that. which, you know, Stephanie, I don't know if you want to speak to that, or... But, so, I mean, I don't, I don't know if then we eliminate, potentially be where there's, we just eliminate the limit, and there is that ability for somebody to come back up, and as Becky, you suggested about having somebody come up a second time, they'd be more limited in their time. I, I don't know, so.
Right. Because there is a concern that if you waive the requirements, or if you change them, you know, for one person, you know, how do you make that decision? And are you exercising your discretion in an arbitrary way? And so that's kind of the, the concern. But I do think that if you wanted to allow, after the response by the applicant, if you wanted to allow members of the public to come up, maybe for a very short period of time, one minute or two minutes, whatever it is, and then only address the topics that were brought up in the response, or the new topic, so they can't just rehash what they already said, we could easily write that into it.
Okay. Thank you. Alderman Hummel?
After Gary spoke, I was wondering whether we might consider limiting Aldermanic comments to three minutes.
I was, I was three minutes.
And we were all...
So I'm, well, a question first. This is very specific to say that this applies to the Board of Aldermen, ARB, and Plan Commission. My question really is, is would we anticipate, expect, that other public forums that we have, that we might impose these same rules?
None that I, I could think of. We typically have few public comments at any other boards or commissions. Those are not typically making decisions the way the Architecture Review Board, Plan Commission, and Board of Alder do, so I, I don't think it's as big an issue.
Yeah, I, I'm thinking more about public forums, like when we had Concordia, Wash U, when we're going to have Wydown, you know, when we have these other public things. And it, it is, the only reason I bring that up is that this is, the context that we're thinking about this is very specific. If we were thinking about it on a broader basis, I might have other comments. That, that's all.
Understood.
And then, back to, I, I guess I'm wondering, Stephanie, on your comments about the impact of showing discretion, what if we decided, because of, let's say it's a controversial subject, that we simply want to suspend these rules for an entire meeting? So it isn't arbitrarily being applied, it's just, we're not going to do it this time. Is there any issue with that?
I don't see any issue with that, as long as you make it clear that it's given the nature and the, the complicity of the, of the particular matter that's in front of you.
Okay.
The complexity, I should say.
Okay, so I, I would like us to be able to think that there may be an instance where we find that to be appropriate. On balance, I would just say I, I kind of waffle about this. I'm sympathetic to Becky's comment. I do kind of feel like this is a solution, looking for a problem to solve. On the other hand, I think Gary's comments are appropriate too, that it's good to have rules. And so there's no reason not to anticipate that. So I'm okay with it, provided we work out the details.
So most of my thoughts have kind of already been said, so I'll save my two minutes, or three minutes, or whatever minutes we're going to allocate. But I would say is, I, I kind of think about this, is kind of the reverse of kind of Gary was laying out, which is, instead of saying, let's start here, and if we don't like it, we could, with the next two weeks, take it back down, I would almost prefer to start here, and if it doesn't solve whatever problem we think we're trying to solve, then we ratchet it up. As in, like, if we put speaker limits and speaker cards, and just stop. And like, i- is that enough to potentially solve? Again, I'm still not sure it's a full problem, but I get the idea of trying to get ahead of the next big problem. But I wonder if we can just start as least rigid and as soft as possible, and if it doesn't really solve the problem, then we just ratchet it up next time, as opposed to starting here and coming down. But I, I think some of the comments from Rick and Becky, I think I agree with, and I think get us closer to that, like, lower point than I think where it may be. Like, yeah, I, I kind of sit where you are, Rick. Like, I'm like, I, I don't, I'm okay if we have it, I'm kind of okay if we don't, I can see why we want it. You know, the lawyer in me just says, I don't want to make it so rigid that the first meeting we have, we wind up violating it, because we want to respond to somebody who's talking, and now we've violated our rules. So I want to make sure there's enough flex in there for us to be able to do what we'd all know we're going to wind up doing. So, that's all I got. Under three minutes, I think, which is unusual for me, but I'll take it.
I think it's a really great point. I didn't even think about that. Because I think, I think it is important to have guidelines. I do think these are a little rigid, just because I, I definitely think it's important for residents to be able to come up and speak. I don't ever want to deter anybody from coming up to speak. And, you know, if they do have a rebuttal, I, I don't want to also not allow them to speak. So I, I just want to make sure we are doing that. So whether it's, you know, after you speak for your three minutes and you come back up, because you have a one-minute rebuttal and, and things like that, because I, I definitely think it's very important to always be able to hear our residents speak, and we want to hear them, and that, to me, is like the most important part. Separate, you know, being on the ARB and Plan Commission for like four years, I do think those might need to be tweaked a little bit more, because there is a lot of information that does go back and forth. And, and invalid questions, you know, if we have someone's coming to speak about the drainage system, and, you know, it's a, a big issue for a bunch of residents, and they say one point, and then they're, and that changes an idea about something else, and they have another question, because, you know, it's affecting their homes and things. So that one might just need to be slightly different overall. But again, I, I, I think it is important to have guidelines, but I do think it's important to hear the residents.
I agree. Well, I mean, I think everybody made some really good points. I don't know if there's anybody in the audience that would like to talk to us about this, or anybody in line? Yep, feel free to come up. And you'll just state your name and address for the record.
I'm Walderman Illabrecht, five Parkwood. I agree. Comments were really good, I like. The ARB is into the details and make minutes that's allowed to the applicant. How many on you are? Be able to know ahead of time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Martin Tuscany Park. I really appreciate what Becky and Rick were saying, and I think the time limit on responses totally makes you lose a give and take. The Concordia/Wash U thing was a great example of all this. And the, the residents are, got a lot of scientists, engineers, people who, builders, people who have a lot of knowledge. We're also the ones who live and breathe next door to these decisions you're making. But I think not having a chance to back and forth exchange is, I don't get the point of that. We're, we're not that big a city to not be able to talk and maybe ask and solve questions. My experience, if I might, with those meetings was, they would always start with a city presentation that was usually two hours, and it was always the same thing over and over. And I remember being very limited in time and feeling, especially if somebody brings up a point, as you were saying, to not be able to respond to it, because I think residents have some insight that you might not have, particularly in very specific areas, you know, residences and, I mean, subdivisions and all that, different from what you might be aware of just generally as a whole city thing. So I'd be really opposed to limiting times to come up, and if you bring up something, we'd like to respond. If we bring up something maybe you haven't thought of, it works both ways, and I really would have trouble with eliminating an exchange. The card thing, I, I don't know, it seems, the, the cities where they do that, do we really, maybe we need, I don't know.
It does help our city clerk keep track of everything.
That's true, yes, yeah, actually.
Wash U, that whole process was a great example of that, where there were so many speakers and trying to get their name, their address, some didn't get it, some would say it really quickly and we wouldn't get it. Making sure that we have a complete record of that hearing is really important.
Yeah, fair enough, that makes sense. And not almost speak well enough to make it even heard what the name or residence is. Anyway, I would, I don't think we're so big that we can't do a little more exchanging like we did. And I'm sorry you missed dinner, but we all missed dinner. And some of these are, they seem to be big issues for us. Thank you.
Thank you. Looks like nobody's raised their hand online. Yep, go ahead.
One more thing. The, the intent of this, in my mind, really is to ensure that everybody has a chance to make their points. I understand the dialogue. There are certain circumstances where it's very, very helpful to have dialogue, and that probably needs to have a look at, so how we can have, have that happen. And a lot of times, it, it lands upon the management of the meeting and how that person is doing it, so we need that discretion in there, that as long as we still have, we're still controlling expectations of the people speaking. But when the circumstance arises, and I do like to be, I, I do hope we are ahead of it, when you want to make sure everyone sitting out there does have a chance to say something, that's what I see as the purpose of putting the structure around the talking, around the presentation. So however we get there, and whatever changes we make, I, I hope that we can, we can, we can facilitate that.
I don't know, David, do you feel like you've gotten some? It sounds like, you know, people are generally receptive to a time limit, generally receptive to the speaker card, certainly with the ability to fill it out online ahead of time, you know, adding that there's that ability to talk for business matters without having permission of, you know, I think allowing some sort of response or follow-up. You know, maybe just starting, I mean, those might be some of the ways that we can get further along, and then depending on that, you know, what that looks like, you know, we as a board can either continue to think about this, continue to tweak whatever comes back. But, you know, I, I mean, I feel like we had a good discussion tonight, and then we can just see what happens.
Yeah, got really good notes on the issue, and I think I think I know which direction to head with it.
Okay. Jeff, did you, you looked like you had...
I, I was just going to just acknowledge and say, you know, thanks to David, because I know we had a whole, we had a partial discussion session on the Friday to kind of go through a lot of this. I know a lot of different points came up tonight, so just thank you for going with us, as we have multiple kind of dates back and forth, so.
No, we want to get this right.
American, and I, I do think, again, it's important that we see how we might distinguish the rules relating to the Board of Aldermen from the Plan Commission, ARB, because there's no question, the latter is much more flexible, the way those meetings are conducted, and appropriately so. There is a lot more give and take. The stuff that the Board of Aldermen generally deals with, which is like PUDs, CUPs, rezonings, the latter, if there's a rezoning, like Wash U, Concordia, is different. But for the most part, the things that the Board of Aldermen do, I think, would much more easily follow some, some more stricter guidelines. Plan Commission, ARB, I think, just needs to be more flexible, given the nature of the way those matters are handled.
Yeah, and I, I've noted that, and actually, in the, the ordinance, the way we have it drafted here, if you look at Plan Commission and ARB, that, that those standards are much lighter than what you see with the Board of Aldermen. So working in some of that rebuttal stuff, I, I think we'll take care of ARB and Plan Commission the way we have it drafted already. We didn't have the speaker limits, we didn't have the provisions about, you know, the Plan Commission won't respond to questions. They typically don't, are not asked questions so much from speakers. They don't really have an open forum during their meetings. So there's, is quite a bit different here, but given the, the conversation tonight, I think we know what to do here, so. We'll get to work on it.
Do we need to, like, table?
If you could postpone this.
Do I have to have a...
Yeah, let's, let's postpone this to the 28th of October, if that's okay. We'll give it a certain date.
I moved that the board postpone consideration of bill number 7098 until October 28, 2025.
Back it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Great, thank you. The next item on our agenda is exciting. We're going to hopefully establish some new boards in the city.
Yes, so I'm going to start by acknowledging Alderman Hummel, Alderman Yorg, and Alderman Fader, who worked with staff to put these together. We had a few different meetings over the past few months to, to talk about these and traded drafts over email. So what you're seeing tonight is the, the result of that work. So we'll start with the establishment of a Special Business District Advisory Board. The attached ordinance repeals the existing section 140.020 and enacts a new one in its place. The committee's name will officially be changed from the Economic Development Advisory Committee to the Special Business District Advisory Board. This new name more accurately reflects its singular purpose, which is to make recommendations to the Board of Aldermen on the use and allocation of the Special Business District Fund, which is the special tax district that we have in the downtown area. The committee will continue to consist of seven voting members, appointed by the, the mayor with Board of Aldermen approval, two of which shall be members of the Board of Aldermen. Members should have experience and interest in, and express commitment to the promotion of business activity, the development of special events, and the enhancement of public places within the Special Business District. Member terms will be three years, and members will be limited to three consecutive full, uh, full terms. And this is for the, the members that are non-Aldermen. So the revised ordinance that you have before you this evening clarifies that the standard for Aldermen is an, is an annual appointment, just like we do with all our other boards and commissions. Finally, staff recommends that the Board of Aldermen approve the attached ordinance, thereby establishing the Special Business District Advisory Board with its revised focus and name.
Thank you. Yes, and thank you to our Aldermen, who were very helpful in getting this going. You know, we really, really appreciate it.
Thank you, Gary, who's also back there and can answer questions tonight.
Back there, thank you. I think this is just a great, I think we've all talked about for many years that the Economic Development Advisory Committee is, you know, kind of a waste, you know? It's a great group of citizens that only meet once a year, so I think this will be a great change to really getting more valuable input. So it'll be great once we, you know, notify this commission, go out to our community. Hopefully, some of those people will still apply and be a part of it. But if anybody, does anybody on the board have any comments or questions about?
Yeah, I, I do. I, I'm a little bit uncomfortable, the advisory board to consist of the seven members who need not be residents. We, we represent our residents, and I, I don't know what you see as the composition of the board, if you have something in mind, but either of material business interest in that, in the, in the, in the business district, or a resident of the city, I think we should at least have a preference for that. I mean, this is who we represent, and this is whose input we want in advising us on how to handle this district.
What was the thought in, for those of you that drafted this? Because the other thing that we will consider next, I think specifically talks about that people are either residents or have a principal office in the city of Clayton, and that feels like it could be relevant. Can you talk about if that was an intentional distinction between the two or not?
And before you answer that, if I can just add one more thing, if, if they, if you have certain, certain expertise in mind that you want on that board, the, the ability to have ex-official members, I think, gives that, gives that place for them to come and contribute to what people who have a, a real contact with Clayton might be able to offer.
I guess as to the question of members not being required, obviously, I, I think the, the thought was that the prior committee, like many of our committees, is devoted in part to making sure that it's nothing but residents, and that in many cases, the residents reflect different wards. and that in many cases, the residents reflect different wards. And I think the attitude here was that downtown is a very distinct area, and that there should not necessarily be any obligation for everybody on this committee to be a resident. Certainly doesn't exclude residents from being on the committee. I think the sense was that there are obviously some important and people with a lot of insight who happen not to live in Clayton but have long-term businesses. They work in Clayton every day of the year. Those are people for whom I'd like to see what their thoughts are, how we develop the downtown area, which is what this is about. So I think in this case, it's a very focused committee, more so than the other new committee, which is really intended to be citywide, invariably will involve the three different wards and the different commercial areas in each one of those wards. So I think the distinction was a valid one here to really focus on downtown and people who, and again, who aren't necessarily residents, but are people with business interests.
Did that answer your question?
It doesn't require a primary place of business or a business interest in downtown. It just says that.
It doesn't say anything.
It doesn't say anything. They're just not required to be residents, is all it says.
Like, would you be opposed, Gary, or anyone else who did this, if we actually amended the Special Business District one to have language like the other one that says they are either residents or, no, I'm losing the language, but residents or have a business interest in the district? Like, that feels, like, that does feel important to me. And, I mean, you spent a lot of time thinking about this. If you intentionally made that distinction, I'd be interested in hearing about it. But your follow-on discussion seemed actually to imply that you would be supportive of us specifying that we want people to either have a residential or business interest in the district.
I would not have a problem with modifying the language.
Yeah.
I would just say that from my standpoint, one of the things that we talked about was, my concern on the Economic Development Committee is that I wanted to make sure that we had representation of our various commercial areas in the city. And having a seven-member commission may cause us to have a challenge doing that, that I'd like to have a number of experts on here, and having a seven-member commission might limit our ability to do that. And so the important thing that we had, and you noted this, was to make sure that we had the flexibility to add additional ex officio members. So the goal really is substantive. We want to make sure that we have the right people around the table that can help us either shape policy, create policy, and/or react to policy, and appropriate initiatives as we move forward. And so really, what I'm most concerned about, and it isn't stated here, is, you know, that we do a sufficient job of promoting the applications that we want to have, and then having a process on how we're going to decide on that. And so we may not all agree on what those priorities should be, but I'm hoping that we have strong applications to achieve the goals that are stated here.
So would you, but in terms of having somebody who has some sort of business interest or lives in the city, I mean, adding some language?
My preference in the, you know, I don't know that, we all had different points of view as we went through this. And so, you know, I am fine with especially the Special Business District Committee, that there's some vested interest, whether it's having a business interest or a resident there, that makes sense to me.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, I'm fine with it. I mean, I would, maybe for a different reason, but like I, I hear you, Susan, that like we represent the residents, but the way I think about this district especially is that we represent all the businesses in downtown too, even if they don't live here. Like, and especially here, because they're paying a separate tax, or at least the owners are, into this district. So again, I don't think we probably thought that extra step to say, let's carve it out to the district. I don't have a problem with that, though, because it's, in some ways, it's their money, and it's being paid by them in order to create events for them to drive business. And so I want them on there.
And that's fine, because they would have the vested interest.
Yeah.
Yeah, like, and I don't need them to live in Clayton, but I do want them to be involved. So as to Becky's change or carve out, that's fine, for those reasons, like, as long as it's.
Do you have any? No, okay.
Just adjusting that language to basically say, members not need be residents of the city of Clayton, but should have, must have a.
I mean, I guess I would suggest that it's amended to match the language that we use in others that say that they are residents or have a principal office or business interest in the district.
Rather use business interest than principal office.
Yeah, that's fine.
Have a significant business interest.
I think just business interest is fine, yeah. Do we need to actually make that amendment and have it seconded and voted on, right?
Yeah, I was just making sure there was.
A significant, so residents or significant business interest.
At the risk of tweaking further, I would prefer the resident be a resident of the district. I really think we're growing downtown areas. We have lots of condominiums. You know, I still think those are the people who are most effective, I guess, to follow up on some of the other points that have been made. This is a very narrow district. We have lots of residents in downtown. I'm not sure that necessarily that someone who lives in Davis Place, just because they're interested in business, is great to have on this committee. I'd much rather have them, you know, live at the Crescent. Well, I guess that's a little outside of the district.
What residences are actually in the district?
Yeah, like Beavis in Place. And also, it's, it's also.
Say for preference of it, I'd allow it.
It's a downtown of our entire city, you know, and I think we all care about that.
Right, I would do residents everywhere for that. I wouldn't want to, that's very specific for residents.
Yeah, and I would only say that we, I mean, I hope we get a lot of applicants, Gary, but I don't, you know, we just don't always get a lot of, you know, if we get a resident who lives at Beavis in Place or 212, and maybe we'd put him to the top.
It would be awfully.
Yeah, I just, I want to make sure we don't narrow our pool too much.
I'm fine with leaving it, but I think as to Rick's point, part of our problem is we don't get a very good job getting applicants, because we don't really go after applicants. So that's the reason we don't get them, is we don't do a very good job seeking them.
And let me talk about how we're gonna do that. So we talked about this today internally. So if this is approved, then we're gonna notify the people that are on the existing EDAC that is no longer active, and that we've started these two new committees. We're already drafting the information that's gonna go out on the city website and connections, all those regular places. But we're also going to send out the information to everybody that's on Gary's list, so those business interests that we have within the downtown area. For special business, we could even reach out to CCBA and say, hey, you have a lot of members that are taxpayers within this particular area, and see if they have anyone that's interested in serving. So we're gonna try to utilize all of those channels to get applicants. And we're gonna establish an initial 30-day window, application window, that they can submit. So basically saying, October 31st, we'll do our first review of the applicants. So that way, we've got a little time to determine what our process is gonna be, but we can start actively seeking those, be seeking those right away. But we've already started that process, and I think it's gonna yield a good number of applicants.
That's great.
Okay, so do I first move that the board consider the amendment and then move to consider the bill as amended? Is that how?
That would probably be cleaner, although legally speaking, you could do it either way. But it would probably be cleaner to entertain the amendment. And if you want me to, I can read that, what I've taken down from the discussion.
Okay.
Okay, so I have section 140.020, subparagraph B. The first sentence is fine. The second sentence, which did read, "Members need not be residents of the city of Clayton", that is deleted in full. And in lieu thereof, we are incorporating the following sentence. Members must be a resident of the city of Clayton or have a significant business interest within the Special Business District.
Okay, do we want to require that interest to be in the special district? I mean, that's fine.
Yeah.
Okay, so moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
You opposed?
Okay, so that's included now.
Okay, I introduce bill number 7099 as amended, approving an ordinance repealing the Economic Development Advisory Committee and establishing the Special Business District Advisory Board to be read for the first time by title only.
Second. Any discussion? Attorney?
An ordinance repealing section 140.020 of the Clayton City Code and enacting in lieu thereof a new section 140.020, establishing a new body to be designated as the Special Business District Advisory Board.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I move that the board give unanimous consent to consideration for adoption of bill number 7099 as amended on the day of its introduction.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Let the minutes reflect that the board has given unanimous consent.
I introduce bill number 7099 as amended, approving an ordinance repealing the Economic Development Committee and establishing the Special Business District Advisory Board to be read for the second time by title only.
Second.
Any discussion? The attorney?
An ordinance repealing section 140.020 of the Clayton City Code and enacting in lieu thereof a new section 140.020, establishing a new body to be designated as the Special Business District Advisory Board.
Alderwoman Buse?
Aye.
Alderwoman Patel?
Aye.
Alderman Fader?
Aye.
Alderman Hummel?
Aye.
Alderman Yorg?
Aye.
Alderwoman Waldman?
Aye.
Mayor McAndrew?
Aye.
Thank you. All right, great, and then the next, we're gonna talk about the Economic Development Committee.
Right, the attached ordinance establishes a new section 140.060 to create the Economic Development Committee. The committee's primary function will be to serve in a purely advisory capacity to the mayor and Board of Aldermen. It will provide recommendations on promoting economic development initiatives across all business districts that align with the city's economic development policy, comprehensive plan, and strategic goals. They'll evaluate and develop actionable recommendations related to business retention, expansion, and attraction strategies, including potential incentives or programs, or the potential incentive programs, I should read, we took the or out, reviewing and providing recommendations on economic development aspects of proposed zoning changes, master plans, and capital improvement projects, identifying and analyzing economic trends, challenges, and opportunities affecting the city of Clayton, and advising on partnerships with regional economic development organizations, chambers of commerce, and other stakeholders to enhance the city's economic competitiveness. The committee will consist of seven voting members appointed by the mayor with Board of Aldermen approval. Members should have experience and interest in and express commitment to economic development, business, real estate, or urban planning. Members should also represent a variety of industries and commercial interests. Two Aldermen may serve as non-voting liaisons to the committee. At their discretion, the Board of Aldermen may also add ex officio or non-voting members. Members shall be appointed for a term of three years and will be limited to three consecutive full terms. Staff recommends that the Board of Aldermen approve the ordinance establishing the Economic Development Committee with its proposed focus and structure.
Thank you. I'll open the discussion. Does anybody have any questions or comments from the board?
I'm losing my focus here. Did we want the membership requirement of residency and significant place of business to be the same between, just parallel each other?
Not, I don't, no.
I don't know what the difference is between a principal office and a significant business interest. So I guess I'd be curious if it would be meaningful even.
I just wondered if we wanted some language that, no, that's fine. Principal office is fine.
Gary, do you have any comments or questions?
I think I've had enough for a while. That's not three minutes.
Anybody else over here? Susan, are you fine with the language as stated?
Fine as it is. I just wanted to, yeah.
No.
I'd like to introduce bill number 7100, approving an ordinance establishing the Economic Development Committee to be read for the first time by title only.
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. City Attorney?
An ordinance enacting section 140.060 of the Clayton City Code and establishing an Economic Development Committee.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Me opposed? Alderwoman Buse?
I move that the board give unanimous consent to consideration for adoption of bill number 7100 on the day of its introduction.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Let the minutes reflect that the board has given unanimous consent.
I introduce bill number 7100, approving an ordinance establishing the Special Business District Advisory Board to be read for the second time by title only.
Second.
Discussion? Attorney?
Ordinance enacting section 140.060 of the Clayton City Code and establishing an Economic Development Committee.
Alderwoman Buse?
Aye.
Alderwoman Patel?
Aye.
Alderman Fader?
Aye.
Alderman Hummel?
Aye.
Alderman Yorg?
Aye.
Alderwoman Waldman?
Aye.
Mayor McAndrew?
Aye.
Thank you. Great, well, we have come to the end of our agenda. I'm not sure we did it last time, but if we want to each, we haven't kind of been here in three weeks. If anybody wants to update us on anything that they've accomplished or been to in the last few weeks?
Anything they've accomplished. That's a challenge.
That's why I said that. Any boards, any board, anything they've, you know, meetings, city meetings?
I'll be, I'll stay within my three minutes. Totally enjoyed participation in the homecoming parade, and thank you again to our fire department for taking us around in that very fun truck and providing us with candy. That might have been New June. Thank you. And also, I attended my first, what's it called, the part, the art advisory.
Oh, art advisory.
Yeah, thank you. And it was, I really enjoyed it. It's a fun thing. You know, CCF received the donation, an offer of donation of a pretty expansive bronze statue. I think it's three shepherds, and each of them is four and a half feet tall, and they're sitting in a circle to put in at Anderson Park. It's a right at the entry as you go down toward the dog park, which should be very, give it some vitality around there. So excited about that. I think it comes to the board maybe at our next meeting for approval, but, so yeah.
That's great.
It was a funny event, exciting.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, we had a Parks and Rec meeting before that, where we looked at that art. It was great. The only other things I would mention is we had a, there was a open house for Caravus, the business that relocated from Merrimack to Hanley. So that was nice, and I don't think I have anything else. We had a CEC meeting where we talked about, one of the main topics was the chief updating us on hate crimes, and it was an interesting discussion of the difference between a hate crime and a hate incident, which might be offensive but not illegal. So it was interesting.
Alderman Fader?
Might have to suspend the rules here, but.
Oh, sure.
I'll do it quick. Art Fair was great. The Jazz Fest was great. What I did want to talk about, which I think would be of interest, is the meeting we had today at the Legislative Affairs Committee, which is the county legislative body, which has like eight or 10 different cities who are represented at every meeting. And again, the purpose of this committee is, at this time of the year, is to basically tee up the lobbying efforts of those who represent cities, since in Jefferson City, we have a large rural representation who are not always very sympathetic to cities. So it tends to be quite a battle in Jeff City. But a few interesting topics that were brought up, I think the number one priority is to deal with continuing efforts at property tax reform. Those of us who attended the meeting, I think there were like 300 people at the center. It was kind of ironic, it was pointed out that a number of those people representatives said essentially, we don't have any plans. we don't have any plan for doing anything to change property tax. And then three weeks later, virtually the exact same people introduced legislation that would dramatically change property tax in the state. And remarkably, I think the idea is somehow to get rid of, in effect, assessor's offices because you don't have to assess property for fair market value under their plan. You basically just base it on square footage and the year of the property, the age of the property with a few categories, but I think seemed to me at least to be totally nonsensical. The loss of, to cities where this property tax reforms to be implemented would be enormous. The other big property issue is, is the recurrent one about grocery sales tax, which will be back again. And so that, again, the numbers are astronomical. I think they gave, for example, something like the city of Manchester would lose 25% of its revenue if they were to change and eliminate tax on groceries. So obviously, we would not be as hard hit. Other topics that are coming up, one is dealing with failure to appear, which is sort of bench warrants, which has been a big topic for the Community Equity Commission. And there's some legislation on that, which I think would be of great interest to them. A bunch of stuff on a topic that's, we're coming up for us is dealing with vaping and other, and other facilities that, that deal in cannabis. So those are maybe the biggest issues. But again, this committee will meet one or two more times, sort of give direction then from the whole county, the, the entire county municipal league. And that will give direction to Pat Kelly, who's the executive director and their lobbyists in terms of what to fight for between January and May. But a lot of this, again, always has tremendous impact on us and other municipalities. So it was four minutes, but I know it was worth it.
Well, and I think Pat Kelly said when they filed the bill, that it was probably his most frustrating day ever as head of the, just because, you know, he had gone to all these meetings around the state and they made clear that they weren't going to do anything. And then after the last one filed the bill the very next day. I mean, he was just like flabbergasted.
Who were the sponsors?
Um, I can't remember.
They were all out, they were all outstate as far as I recall, but there were two or three of the people who at the meeting specifically said, we have nothing in mind.
Right.
Which obviously wasn't so.
And I, I think just in the legislative update, I think that will be the next municipal league meeting, which is on October 23rd, which, you know, we can all go to. I think they'll talk a lot about legislation for the upcoming year. So I think that's going to be the focus of that meeting in October, so.
Great. I wanted to let everyone know I had an exchange with the folks at Opera Theater St. Louis, Nicole and Andrew, letting them know that we're receptive to working out some kind of an arrangement. And then I shared some concerns that came up at our meeting. And then let them know that it's likely to be an iterative process as we go back and forth. And I received a response that they were very grateful for the guidance. They're looking forward to trying to see if they can't work something out. So it was all a very positive exchange. We had a CCF Executive Committee meeting. They are looking at modifying some of their structure in terms of committee and engagement, which is positive, one of which would include a committee for Wydown in part because it's a fundraising effort. And so they'd like to be involved there. They're also looking forward, whether they're in a ex officio position or a liaison or whatever, just continuing their involvement with the Parks and Rec Commission and the Sustainability Advisory Committee as well. And then finally, they will be making a presentation, or at least they will be coming before us on December the 9th. I guess what they'd really like is to have a dialogue rather than a presentation. So I know David will be working on that. We, Becky and I are hosting a coffee on Saturday. And so I'm sure that our meeting in late October for the tornado recovery in Wydown will be of paramount interest to the folks that attend. I know that they're all very appreciative of all the work that the city has done, but they're still anxious for more to occur. So trying to see if I've missed anything.
I'll just say October 27th, 6:30, and David was able to have it at Concordia. So if everybody wants to put that on their calendar, October 27th, 6:30.
Yeah, so we, we put it on the calendar this afternoon, the city calendar, but it's going to be coming out through social media and all the regular stuff here shortly. As the mayor said, that's Thursday, October 27th, 6:30 PM at Coburg Hall, which is at Concordia Seminary. So we have that booked. We're going to talk about three top.
One more time, what is it, October what, 20?
27th.
27.
Yes.
And it's a Monday.
Or it's a Monday. She's got it as a Thursday. Oh, yeah, I'll let's switch. It is Monday. Anyhow, I, I do want to mention we'll have three topics that evening. So first, we're going to talk about the proposed charter amendment. It's going to be a really brief summary on it, but while we have everybody there and it's a week before the election, we feel that would be a good opportunity to, to put some of that information out. So we will talk about charter amendment briefly. Then we'll get into the tornado restoration update. So we're currently building out our, our projects for FEMA that will all be submitted next week. So we'll talk about timelines and, and sort of what that looks like. And then we'll get into the Wydown Boulevard conceptual design. So our consultant is nearly complete with the concepts. So we can do an initial review. We have some, some cost estimates associated with that as well. But that's what the meeting will entail. So the charter and the tornado update, the recovery update, that particular portion of it's going to be more presentation style. So I'm just going to be updating everybody on those particular items. The conceptual designs will kind of morph into really one of those more planning type meetings where there's going to be a kind of a general overview of what we're doing, but then people will, will be able to go up and interact with boards and take a look at the plans a little bit more closely and then comment on those. For people that can't make it, I am going to record my presentation portion, just like we did with Wash U, and turn it into a Zoom link. So we're going to do that for the, the charter amendment and the tornado restoration. Post that on Engage Clayton. And then also on Engage Clayton, we'll show the three concept designs and then allow comments through Engage Clayton for people that can't be there. So we are going to make all of that available through that, that channel. So all of that's going to be coming out shortly. And we're ready to, to put it together and get it going. So sorry to hijack your.
Yeah.
Report, but it's a lot of good information.
Yeah, well, yes, it was. It was very good information. I just, I don't have any more to report, but just a follow-up question on that. So I'm, I'm confident some people may wonder, and I'm guessing the answer is we don't know. But, you know, are we gonna, is it one and done? We're going to have this meeting and then we'll make a decision? How will we make a decision? Or does it kind of depend on, let's see what the feedback is? And it will, we'll make a decision after we get the feedback.
That's exactly right. Just the initial feedback on it. Now, I will tell you, cost is going to be a big factor here because the cost variation between designs one and three is going to be pretty significant. So that's where that private fundraising effort and CCF will come in to try to make up that gap. Because most of these things aren't going to be reimbursable through FEMA. So we'll get it going.
So a couple of things, like we talked about, we did homecoming, the parade was great. Thank you all for letting my kids basically roam around in and out of the fire trucks to hand out candy. Nobody got hurt. It's good to hear about Anderson Park. So for those of you who don't know, I have a son who's named Anderson. And every time we drive by the park, he thinks this is. So I can tell him that we are putting more stuff in his park. On the two more serious points, so I was able to go down a little bit during Jazz Fest. And it was, it was the first time I'd gone and been down in downtown during that. And Annalise was, she went with her friends to Clayton Homecoming. So they were taking pictures, like everybody and their brother down there. But it was really nice to just see the city activated and people everywhere. And it really was, it really was one of those moments where I could kind of looked around and I'm like, yeah, like I'm proud of what we're doing. And I just had not, because of life and stuff, had never been downtown during those events. So I wanted to give credit to, to everybody who works on that kind of stuff. The other thing I did, so mayor and I in June at various points went to Missouri Municipal League Conference out in St. Charles. A couple of easy, a couple of quick takeaways is it gives me a good perspective just where we are and how well we do stuff. Like we always talk about that, but when you hear about what a lot of the cities in, in towns are talking about, like we, we're like way beyond those conversations. Like you've already solved all that stuff. So that was interesting to hear. The two big sessions we went to, they talked about one, economic development, which was great from an academic standpoint. But it was all about, we have all these greenfields and you have this open interstate. Like what do you put there? Like, but it, it didn't really work for pretty much anybody. The, the mayor of Brentwood and some of the other ones were all like, well, this doesn't really work for any urban environment. The other one was, was the retail one, and they talked about how to bring more retail in. My takeaway for that, for all of us at a high level, is a lot of what the retail consultants were talking about was drive-throughs, whether they be chain or not chain, and chain restaurants. And what got me thinking about for Clayton is we spent so much time talking about, we want retail. Continuing to make sure that we understand what retail we want and what retail we don't want. And understanding that if we are going to continue to kind of not search for a certain kind of retail, we need to be okay with sitting with open spots until we get what we want. Because the way the consultants were talking about is the kind of retail we have, I think historically have gotten is not the, I don't say easy retail to get, but there's not really a process for it in the way there is for like your standard, like new Chick-fil-A to throw in somewhere. So I think just for all of us to just keep in mind, if we talk about retail, what we're really talking about is there's a certain kind of retail we want. And we may have to wait a lot longer than other cities would. That happened. So that was it.
Um, yeah, homecoming was great. First time I've ever been in the, in a parade. So that was really fun to see everyone out. I feel like this was probably the best turnout for homecoming, you know, a lot of floats and things. So that was really fun. Just Gary and I hosted the Ward Street Coffee back in mid-September and we have our next one on October 11th, so.
Great.
Good.
Well, I've, I've definitely had a busy few weeks. I went to a Metro Mayor's Lunch where they talked a lot about the weather. Like somebody from the Weather Service came and talked to us about like how you can really be like on a live chat with experts, like forecasters, people from the Weather Service. So I thought this was really cool, but not surprisingly, I took it back to our fire chief and talked to our event staff and they're already plugged in. So, which is not surprising, but the tornado came up. So, and Chief Tobin's back there and Charlie's already left, but I did also have dinner at the fire station last week, which was wonderful. But Charlie cooked a wonderful meal. So I wish I would have given him a shout out when he was still standing there. But you'll pass along the kudos. So we had our first Shaw Park Design Meeting, so that was, that's progressing. Just a shout out to our chief, Smith, who came to an Old Town meeting and talked a lot about the crimes that have occurred in Old Town this past summer and did a wonderful job just answering everybody's concerns, questions for like an hour. He did a great job. Jeff, thank you so much for your very accurate comments on the MML. They also, CCF, we had a Hanley House Fall Event that was, I think, you know, maybe not hugely attended, but it was also very nice. There was a CCF event at a home across the street beforehand, which was well-attended. I went to Regis, which is our, you know, EDAC, like our, I don't know what you even call Regis, but like, you know, I host our dispatch. Thank you, Dave. Cause I wasn't able to go to an open house there this summer, but it was great to hear more about that. I went to the municipal league meeting where they talked about a new app that would, there's a lot more, there's a lot of accidents involving emergency, whether it's fire, police. And there's an app that somebody in Missouri has developed that would kind of go inside every police car, fire truck, that would kind of then send almost like an Amber Alert out to cars saying, watch out, like you're about to approach an emergency vehicle in order to lessen accidents. Again, of course, our chief knew about that already. But it's, you know, until it's really widely dispersed through cars, but it was really interesting to hear about it. It was great that municipal league brought it to us to hear about. I also went to Caravoo. I must have missed you. There's a new company, New Ground International, where I went to a ribbon cutting for it. They've actually moved into the same 101 South Hanley building that Caravoo moved into. They were out in Chesterfield, but they actually were founded the same year that Clayton was founded, 1913. And they were the company that built, or really was the architect behind Brown Shoe. So they've kind of moved around a little bit, but it's great. They're so excited to be back in Clayton. So that was, that was really fun. So, and they designed the building across the street to those like, kind of, I don't know what that architectural style is, but where the real estate company is in. So, but that was fun. And yeah, homecoming was great. So thanks, everybody. So.
Eric and I just mentioned that I've had a number of people compliment the city on the paper we have now on vacant buildings.
It looked so much better.
It's a tremendous change for downtown.
Yes, I agree.
And the other thing I want to mention, since Ann Martin was nice enough to stay here the whole time, is I fully agree with her comment about those metal signs, because in Davis Place, we have them in the medians for junk and all kinds of stuff. And so it is very annoying and, you know, I wish we could do a better job getting rid of them. I had, I guess Ann has to come over to Davis Place to pull them.
Yep.
I actually did pull one, not like Ann, but I pulled one.
Pull them all the time and they keep showing up. We have quite a collection.
Yep, I'm sure.
Yeah, we.
Yeah.
We collect a lot of signs.
Yeah. David, do you have any?
Uh, I don't think so. Yeah, actually, really quickly, I do want to thank our staff because Jazz Fest was awesome. So Kristen Bryant, who does our events, did a great job coordinating that. All the public works folks that showed up and worked, police was there as well. They, I mean, you never know what kind of crowd is going to show up, how large a crowd. And I mean, that's as big a crowd as we've had for anything. And we handled it really without any issue. We had a few small things we'll tweak going forward. It's nothing that anybody that would go to the event would ever notice. But yeah, they, they're doing a great job with it. Brentwood's working really, really well for events. And I'll just say, we've got three hours left in fiscal year '25. And it was a great year for the city of Clayton. Obviously, we had the tornado event, which is not a great thing, but I'm really proud of the response that we had. But the number of things we achieved throughout the year is really, really impressive. So just want to thank everybody on our staff and the, the board for being supportive and really setting that, that broad policy direction. And everybody's just really firing on all cylinders right now. So it feels good to be here and I look forward to fiscal year '26 in three hours. We'll get going with a whole new set of projects and initiatives. Yeah, we'll get going.
Happy New Year.
Happy New Year time. That's right.
Yeah.
That's right.
Will you adjourn?
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Brady?